Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 11th Board of Education meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just before we get started, I want to apologize for our starting late, that we had to take a photograph for this year's yearbook, and that's what we were doing for the last 10 minutes or so. So now we're ready to get started. First order of business on the agenda tonight is the recognition of the Going Green Club from the superintendent's report. So Dr. Glass, you want to take over?
Thank you. It's my honor to recognize some of our students this evening, and they will be formally recognized by County Legislature of District 10, Damon Maher. And as he's working his way up to the podium to recognize the students, I want to give a little bit of background on the Going Green Club. It was formed about 15 years ago by a small group of psychologically-minded high school students, whose participants now include middle school students, and it's grown into one of the most popular clubs at both Eastchester Middle and Eastchester High Schools. And every year, the Going Green Club volunteers participate in real science. They are citizen scientists, and they grow and learn through hands-on experiences. Citizen science is really the practice in participation and collaboration in scientific research, and what they do through this practice is they share and contribute data through their experience of monitoring and collecting information in the environment, working with community groups, and feeding that information back. So one of their partnerships has been with the Westchester Parks Foundation, and over the last few years, they've partnered with the Westchester Parks Foundation on an initiative called the Clean River Project. And the Clean River Project was established in 2018. It addresses water quality issues on the Bronx River and particularly focusing on floating trash. The volunteers help find the source of the trash and stop it from entering the river to begin with, and so not only is the ecosystem clean one time, but it is preserved, allowing other organisms to survive in this environment, in the parks and the rivers we all share. So to recognize our students, I would like to invite County Legislature Damon Maher to come, and come to the podium, please, and present a tribute to our students, who are all seated right here in the front, I believe, the entire group.
Hi, I'm Jean Marie Woods-Rae. I thank you for inviting myself and Going Green to discuss something that we are passionate about. I'd like to thank Legislature Damon Maher for recognizing the Going Green Club's effort and environmental impact. Dr. Glass, the Board of Education, and Dr. Capuano, thank you for your continuous support, enabling Going Green to work on projects such as the Clean River Project. The Going Green Club has been in existence for the last 15 years, and that time, we have worked on various projects in the community and school, including cleanups, walk-to-school days, beautification, education, and raising money for life straws, water filters for impoverished areas. Since 2018, we have participated in the Clean River Project. The Bronx River Clean River Project allows the Going Green members to see their environmental impact immediately. As citizen scientists, we climb down into the Bronx River, clean the debris from the boom near the Crestwood train station, catalog it for later research, bag it and weigh it. We're able to educate others on the harm that non-biodegradable items can cause on our waterways when not properly disposed. Going Green students are able to visibly improve the ecosystem for the plants and animals in and around the Bronx River, and to maintain the beauty of the Bronx River that is enjoyed by the community. Students learn that their small actions, when worked collectively, can have a positive message and great impact. I'd also like to thank the Westchester Parks Foundation for providing the framework and project in which we are able to become involved, especially Erin Cordenier, Adam Lippman, and Mary Benjamin. Thank you.
Hello, thanks for having me. My name is Mary Benjamin. I'm the manager of volunteer programs with the Westchester Parks Foundation. Our mission is to engage the public to advocate for and invest in the preservation, conservation, use, and enjoyment of Westchester County's 18,000 acres of parks, open spaces, trails, and recreational areas. The Clean River Project invites volunteers to participate in hands-on science, as you heard, and we are so proud that we've had the partnership with the Going Green Club that we do. They have become stewards for the environment. They always come with a positive attitude. They are hardworking, dedicated, and they have really made an impact on the Bronx River Reservation. In 2021 alone, your group contributed to the removal of over 12,000 items of trash from the Bronx River. So on behalf of the Westchester Parks Foundation, thank you so much, and congratulations on your proclamation. Now introduce Legislature Maher to the podium.
Thank you. Yes, I am Legislature Damon Maher. I have the great privilege and honor of representing Takahoe, Eastchester, and parts of Norrisell in the county government, in the county legislature, and I'm here to bring greetings on behalf of the legislature and its chairman, the county itself, and also the Committee on Parks and Recreation, which I am a member. And I've got to say, we have to count our blessings where we live. We have really the first linear park in the country, the Bronx River Reservation, and it is beautiful, but remember, unlike sewage, stuff that falls out of garbage cans is on your street, it all eventually ends up down a hill into a pipe and into a river, which here is the Bronx River, and it's not anything that's going to be picked up in a treatment plant or treated or anything like that. So it is very important that we cut it off at the source, as the kids here are doing, or get involved literally hip-deep in cleaning the river. They go out in waders and clean out these booms that we have that are stopping all the floatables coming down. So again, I can't be happier to see this being done. I personally spend a lot of time hiking, running, biking along the trails. Now we have a beautiful extension of the trail that goes from the waterfalls at Scarsdale train station up to Hartsdale. Everybody got to try that, just beautiful views, both from near the river and up and down rolling hills, so you can see the river at different elevations. So without further ado, I'm going to call up the students who've been involved in Going Green, and we have the certificates of merit from the county. And first, we have Salma Aserkoff.
Thank you.
Let's see. And last but not least, Kaitlin Putt Hakul. And just again, to emphasize how important the parks became these past two years for people to get out and enjoy them, and again, we're so blessed to have this so nearby. And please, keep up the good work. And again, another round of applause for all our students. Thank you. I also want to thank our teacher and club advisor, Jean Marie Woods, for doing such an amazing job with our students. Thank you all very much. One more round of applause. So we also have a proclamation from the county for the Going Green Club and for Jean Marie Woods-Rae. And there are a lot of whereas is here, but I'll read the last one. Whereas, Ms. Woods-Rae, and Going Green Club President Maria Capasso, Vice President Ava July, and Member Rich Mirzai, believe that the success of their project depends on the dedication of all the members of the 2021-22 Going Green Club, who are individually honored with certificates of merit today, and therefore be it resolved that the members of the Westchester County Board of Legislators and their chairman, and me, representing District 10, and many friends gathered here today to honor Jean Marie Woods-Rae and the Eastchester High School Going Green Club, and for their good works that have been done over the years, be it further resolved that January 11, 2022, be proclaimed Jean Marie Woods-Rae and Going Green Club Day throughout the county of Westchester. So you have your own day. Thank you very much. We're really honored that you came to honor our students, and we thank you all for being here tonight, to share in that, and to advisor and teacher Jean Marie Woods, we appreciate all your leadership in helping bring this program to our school district and to our elementary, or excuse me, our high school and middle school students. Thank you. We appreciate you very much. We have two more components to the superintendent's report tonight. The next one has to do with the diversity, equity, and inclusion task force recommendations. And so I'll be moving to the podium along with some partners to share that with you. And then the last part will be to just give you some general updates around the district. So I'm going to move over there, if that's okay. And while I'm doing that, I'd like to ask if the others who will be presenting with me would like to join. This is exciting. We've been working hard on the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force for six months now. We had six meetings. Each one lasted just under two hours, so I guess we've got about 15 hours of actual meeting time into this work. And in that amount of time, what I'm most pleased about is how the group worked together and really listened as a group, and there was a lot of open, honest dialogue and a lot of listening that took place. And through that time, I think we bonded. I think we got to understand and respect multiple perspectives, and we really have come up with something that I think we all feel really good about. And we're excited to share that with you tonight. First of all, I'd like to recognize all the members of the task force, many of whom are here tonight. If you're up here because you're going to help present, or if you're here because you were part of the task force, and that would include some of our Board of Education members, I'd like to ask that you stand, please, so we can know who you are, recognize you. It's not the whole group. We had about 28 or 29 people, but if you were part of that task force and you're here tonight, would you stand so we can recognize you? I want to thank you, because this was courageous work. You're going to learn more about it. It was important work, and the participation and the engagement and the investment was stellar. So thank you all. How about a big round of applause for their time and their effort? Thank you. Thank you all. We're going to be moving through the highlights of what we had accomplished. So you may be wondering, what was the role of the task force? I remember when we selected the task force, there was a lot of discussion about who was on it and how they were selected. All of these, we had a lot of people who applied and who told us why they were interested, and we made an effort, I made an effort, to go through and try to create a committee that seemed to me to represent a balanced range of opinions, and I know that that was very subjective in many respects, but what else are you going to do, right? You have to go into this and say, okay, people are telling me who they are and what they bring to this work and why they're interested, and you want to make sure you have a little bit of everything. We had way more people apply than we had room to have a committee, but nonetheless, it shows that this was an area of interest. And so the committee met, and the charge of the committee was to unpack the New York State Culturally Responsive Sustaining Education Framework, which is a mouthful, and as you can imagine, the document was long. There was a lot in it. So really trying, we know that the state was really asking school districts to take a look at this work and consider what we might undertake in this document. So the document was big, long, dense. We studied it. We tore it apart. We broke into small groups, and our task was to understand how these principles impact various stakeholders. How would these principles impact a student? How would they impact a teacher? How would they impact an administrator? How would they impact a board member? How would they impact community members? All of these were considered. And our charge was to recommend some actionable steps that we could consider, and that's what you're going to be receiving tonight. I'd like to introduce two of our primary facilitators, the first of whom will be coming tonight, Susan Chester, who's a supervisor of Humanities, and our middle school principal, Madeline Lobou. Each of them undertook substantial facilitation as part of this task force, and they will be sharing with you some of the findings, along with others who are here tonight, and will be introduced momentarily. So Susan, would you like to come up and talk a little bit about our norms?
Yep. Thank you. All right, so one of the first things that we did at our very first meeting in June was talk about what would this conversation be like. We knew that we would be getting into topics that might be uncomfortable, and we wanted to make sure that we had an open and respectful community as we were working through. So we set out five norms: to disagree agreeably, to speak courageously, to allow all voices to be heard, to keep an open mind, and to listen respectfully. And I believe at our last meeting, and Dr. Glass alluded to this, something I think that we were all really proud of was the fact that we were able to, over the course of six meetings, stick with these norms and have productive, constructive conversation. We wanted to give the Board of Education an idea about how our work developed over time. So we had two meetings in June, very end of the school year, and we focused that phase of the work on what we called "unpacking." So it was establishing those norms, getting to know each other, and then also understanding what our work was and what our work was not, and realizing that we would be making a set of recommendations and that further work would likely need to be done at the conclusion of our time together. We also spent some time getting to know culturally responsive sustaining education and the framework. We looked at the historical background of civil rights in American education, going back to the Brown decision in the 1950s, and then we looked at the academic development of culturally responsive education from its roots in multicultural education. And then we began focusing on stakeholder groups that were represented on the task force. So the document outlines either six or seven different stakeholder groups. We focused on four that were represented among us: teachers, school leaders, district leaders, and families and community members. When we came back to school this fall, after doing some various reading on some different topics, we turned to really trying to understand what each of the four principles in the document, what each of those meant, and what they meant for Eastchester. So the document is a framework. It is not a prescription or a list of must-dos from New York State. It is guidelines around which districts can sort of chart their own path with what makes sense for them at the local level. But the four large principles were or are: number one, creating a welcoming and affirming environment; number two, fostering high expectations and rigorous instruction; number three, identifying inclusive curriculum and assessment; and then finally, engaging in ongoing professional learning and support. And then finally, as our work concluded in our last two meetings in the late fall, we changed our focus again to look at what recommendations would we make to the Board of Education using those four principles as a guide, and identify ongoing work that can hopefully include more stakeholders, especially a group that was missing, which was our students. So I think our next part is, the way that we've organized the presentation is we have those four principles that I just mentioned, and a small sort of subgroup from the task force worked on each of those principles, and our recommendations are based within those. So between myself and Dr. Glass and Madeline and some of the other task force members, we'll talk you through those recommendations based within each principle. So before, the group that I was a part of worked on principle one, creating a welcoming and affirming environment. I do have one of our members of our subgroup wasn't able to be here tonight, but he did send in a note that he wanted to be read. It's from someone that we all know really well, Dick Forliano, who says, "I apologize that because of a health problem in my family, I am unable to personally read this statement about the report of the findings of the task force on diversity, inclusion, and equity to the Eastchester Board of Education and the community in general. For those who do not know me personally, I was a secondary social studies teacher in the district for almost four decades from 1968 to 2006. I have been serving as Eastchester town historian since 1988 and presently work as a teacher consultant to public and private schools in lower Westchester. For over the last five decades, I have worked with thousands of Eastchester students, parents, colleagues, and community members. As an educator, it has been my mission to teach young people not what to think, but how to think. It has been a privilege over the last seven months to work with parents, teachers, administrators, and community members, and how the professional staff of the Eastchester Union Free School District can guide our students in an age-appropriate way to deal with unsettling issues that are dividing both our local community and the entire country. I sincerely believe that all voices of the participants in the task force have been heard. Special focus was placed on the values that for centuries have bound the Eastchester community together without ignoring issues that are not only dividing our school district, but the country. I hope that in a few weeks, I will be free to attend in-person efforts to support the work that the task force on diversity, inclusion, and equity has begun." So that's from Dick Forliano. All right, so our group, and I have Leah Moore, is here with me. Leah, I don't know if you want to introduce yourself.
Sure. Hi, my name's Leah Moore. I'm a parent in the community. I have three small children, and two of them are students in the special education program.
All right. So when we began really looking closely at creating a welcoming and affirming environment, we really deduced that the most important theme in this principle was all about what does it mean to be a community, and how is a school district a part of its larger community, and how does it have its own community within? And thinking about that led us to ask the following questions: can we define our community values? What is our identity? What are the things that we can agree on despite having areas where we may disagree? And also, how does this work align with the strategic planning process? And we began to brainstorm different ways that we could think about how we could bring the entire community together, K-12, and then even outside of the school district. And one thing that we came up with, and you'll see that I have those words there, "We are Eastchester," was coming up with some sort of phrase or a slogan, and we tossed around a lot of different ideas, just something that we could hold on to as being what ties our community together. And we thought about taking that slogan and engaging students in creating a logo or a design around those words, phrases, slogan, and then whatever it was that we came up with, sort of making sure that we translate that into multiple languages, the multiple languages that are spoken within our community and within our schools. And then students could create imagery that went along with that logo and that wording, and this might be something that we could then hang in every school, maybe even every classroom across the district. And then we even thought about if we were able to get that off the ground, there could even be a film that would be created, it could be created by students, we have that ability to do that here within the high school, and then promote it on social media. So the idea didn't sprout from nothing. I had shown the committee, well, the subcommittee, something that was done in the village of Irvington, which is over on the riverside of the county. It happens to be where I live, and these are examples of posters. The theme or the slogan was "Irvington is Everyone." And up there on the slide, you can see child-made artwork that went along with that theme, and the whole idea was uniting the community. It was right after the very divisive 2020 presidential election, where members of the Irvington community felt there was a lot of division, and they wanted to do something to bring people together. It was highly successful, and when I shared that with our group, people thought immediately different ideas of how we might do something similar to this. This was not led by the school district. It was led by the community, and then involved schools afterward by some of the art teachers encouraging students to create these posters. So that's where the idea came from. I did speak with the community members that spearheaded this in Irvington. I did speak with the community members that spearheaded this in Irvington. It's not copyrighted, it's not, it's completely open for us to interpret and use, you know, in our own way. So that's where the, where the idea came from. It also led us to think about who we could partner with in this work. So there's, you know, a whole long list of community, school and community partnerships that might want to be part of promoting, you know, the artwork or displaying it within other areas of the community outside of school. So, that was our first idea. Okay? Our second idea revolved around advocacy and mentorship, and we thought about three different areas where there could be mentoring for students and for, you know, families in the community. So there is, you know, adult-to-student mentorship. There are several middle schools in the area that use something called advisory, where all faculty members have a small group of students that they meet with on a regular basis, for, you know, team building and community building. There are many different examples of peer-to-peer mentorship. Within the community, we were familiar with programs that have eighth graders, in a very structured way, mentor incoming sixth graders to, you know, help, you know, incoming middle school students feel more welcome within, you know, what can be that overwhelming scary environment of middle school at first. And then similarly, programs that have 12th graders mentoring ninth graders. There are organizations that sponsor mentorship programs such as this, like Link Crew, and then they, that's for high school, and they have, I believe it's Web for the middle school. Again, focusing on things like school culture, anti-bullying, reducing stress, helping students navigate transitions in their education. And then finally, we had one that is already working, I think, at Ann Hutch?
Yes, thank you. So, when, when the committee talked about this, we talked about this in terms of "and", that we saw a lot that was working really successfully, and there's opportunities for more. So one really clear example of that is there's a really lovely partnership happening at Ann Hutchinson between the neurotypical students and the students in the self-contained populations, which is where my child is, so I see this personally. However, that's not happening, for example, at Greenville, because that population of students is not attending that school, and we don't see it continuing in the middle school and the high school. And what, what happens is if a child goes from Waverly to Greenville to then the middle school, they might actually not have any interactions with students in this population until they get to middle school. So, we were looking at it as a really nice example of what we were calling the "and," that we have these systems in place already, and that we could systemize them even more so to create more opportunities and more interactions peer-to-peer. And then that extended to also the family-to-family as well, that we have families of all different readiness, all different backgrounds, all different comfort areas, and partnering those families together, whether it's, what do you do in the summer around here? A lot of people moving from the city said, "I don't, I don't know where we're supposed to swim," all the way to, what are we recommending for doctors, or I speak different languages, and helping to access our community beyond the school, we thought as a committee would be a really nice place to move. And a really nice way to summarize our section was, the concept of welcoming and affirming is that people in our community, the students, all stakeholders, are seen, heard, and valued. And that that really begins and ends with the student voice, that we are looking for opportunities to have students have more of a direct input. I, I know I'm a high school educator myself, I know the power of student voice, where they can feel, again, seen, heard, and valued, with all of their experiences, what's that going to look like at all the different grade levels, from our littlest ones to the ones leaving the high school, and how can the administration and the larger systems at play help create that safe affirming culture, which is what some of my amazing colleagues are about to share with you. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name's Madeline Lavoun. I'm the Eastchester Middle School principal, and I'm here with...
Hi, I'm Samantha Delaney, and I'm a parent in the community. I have two children at the Greenville School.
And we were part of group number two, fostering high expectations and rigorous instruction. The recommendations that came out of much conversation and collaboration within our group over the many hours that we met together consisted of preparations was our first item. And our ideas were that the community would prosper rigor and independent learning, that our school environment continues to be academically rigorous and intellectually challenging, while also considering the different ways in which students learn. This can include providing opportunities to use critical reasoning, taking academic risks, leveraging growth, a growth mindset to learn and grow from our mistakes, and encourage positive self-image and empower others to succeed within the school environment. Continuing with, I like the way the previous group used the word "and," as many of these recommendations are currently happening within our schools, and we like to continue them, and of course, there's always room for more. Providing various ways of accessing the curriculum, which can consist of helping students identify their learning styles in both classroom and homework, center the identities of all students within the work, incorporating instructional strategies and assignments that are responsive to their learning styles, provide families with the opportunities to share their child learning styles and needs in collaboration with the schools, provide clear and accessible information about instructions and expectations to families about what students are learning and what they will be learning, and providing resources that provide, in multiple languages, to meet those needs within the community. We also saw that it would be, this would consist of continuing utilizing research, evidence-based assessment tools to inform instruction and provide needs-based and support to students, and developing and sustaining the mindset of having high expectations. And that would be not only the focus of grades, but also personal growth and character development for our students. I'd like to say that our group consisted of myself as a school district administrator, parents, educators, as well as Board of Education members, and it was a really wonderful experience. And I'll, without further ado.
So like we said, the "ands," right? We're enriching and learning opportunities, and students' participation is so important, right? We want to continue enriching learning opportunities for all students, and in particular, differently able students. We need to provide staff with the specified training resources and additional staff so that the students have access to the curriculum. And we need to continue to ensure that the participation is in the least restrictive environment, which is something that we already do in Eastchester, but is there anywhere that we can tweak? Is there anywhere that we can grow further? We also want, which is very important, is the participation from the students. So like we said before, the students are what should and will drive this work, so we need them in the learning process. We need them to make recommendations for supports and services for their academic success, and be included in discussing those post-secondary transition goals. Where will they be after high school and beyond? So what are our next steps? And our focus kind of went into providing time for the teachers to collaborate and have student-teacher relationships, as well as surveying and collecting data from the students. So we wanted to provide that time for collaboration, which already happens, but how can we enhance it? How can we make it better? Why not survey also the teachers and administrators to see if there's any specified professional development needs? Give teachers access to more support staff to facilitate this collaborative opportunities. Like we said before, if we want to have, you know, the schools meet together and have these peer-to-peer mentorships, do we have enough staff to help facilitate that to happen? So these are things that we need to kind of look at to make sure that we have that in place. And to provide resources to be utilized within the classroom and at home, so to continue building that home-school connection. And lastly, we want to collect data from student-specific variables. So some include, and they're not limited to the student grade level, E&amp;L status, classified students, gender, race, ethnicity. We want to know more about our students and where they're coming from, and their culture and home life, and how we can incorporate that into our curriculum and our learning in our community here in the schools. In addition, in that survey, we want to know, what are the students interested in? What kind of clubs, elective courses, advanced courses, non-regents courses? That kind of is focused on the high school? But even at the younger grades, like what are they interested in? What are things that they do outside of school that can connect, again, with that home-school connection? So our main next steps in this subset was providing time for educators to meet and collaborate, and surveying students and teachers to see, where should we go next? Where are we now? And what can we do in the future? So, thank you.
Thank you. And then that moves us to our third principle, identifying inclusive curriculum and assessment. And in order to present these, we had, this was our smaller group within the group. Cara DiPolito and Stanley Tangari are here to share with you a little bit more and lead you through these slides. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much. I just wanted to say also that in my almost 15 years of teaching here at Eastchester, I was so thrilled to be part of this committee, and that I originally joined also, you know, because in recent years, becoming a mother, I feel like having these conversations is, are more important than ever. So I really appreciate everyone's time and effort. In breaking apart into our smaller groups, we talked about some common threads that everyone happened to mention, and those included metacognition, so obviously, the students' understanding, you know, how they think about their thinking, which can span anywhere from teaching them how to study, to analyzing a text, to understanding what they want to do with their lives and what they're going to, you know, proceed into with their futures. We talked about student portfolios as a tangible assessment and measurement of their progress, and also building stronger bonds among the family and the community in our areas.
Thank you, Board, for having us here. And I want to thank the task force for everything you've done. I'm Stan, I'm a parent and a proud coach of the Eastchester kindergarten Bulls team. So, some of the things that we did, you know, as my colleague Cara had mentioned, is that also to thinking about, how can we use education as excellence, where we're really focused on teaching and creating a space where our students learn to question, right? How can questioning open up things we did not know before? And so for that, for us, that ranged across various spectrums. That also included issues of, you know, facilities, do all students have access to facilities and equipment and classrooms to be able to do that type of thinking? What type of, you know, gaps are there that our students can learn to question, and then from those questions, come up with greater questions and answers that could really solve much bigger social, scientific, and all types of, you know, social matters?
Okay, so, having these conversations about all of these wonderful ideas, you know, it's important to talk about exactly what it looks like. So, inviting family culture, traditions, and experiences into classrooms as primary sources. Now, some of this already happens, especially with our language teachers and with multicultural night, so we talked about just kind of expanding some of that and being able to move that throughout more of our curriculum. Surveying students and teachers regarding culturally responsive curriculum, so again, gathering some data and information, and figuring out, you know, exactly where we want to go with our culturally responsive curriculum. Identifying and addressing multiple learning styles and strategies regularly, obviously to target all of the different learning needs of our classes. Examining the distinction between core and supplemental materials, and enabling teams, professional development in district, and try-stays-outside to evaluate materials from a cultural perspective. So really gathering our support both inside and outside of the school areas. And then developing a common curriculum framework containing conceptual design features and an opportunity to share and make connections.
And one of, one of the things that's really important to consider with this is, how are the ways in which we're using the classroom space to expand our conception of inclusive curriculum, right? And that's where, that also meant that requiring us to do the work of also studying how education takes place in our school, to see where the gaps are, where students are really interested in, you know, engaging with certain themes that we haven't been able to address, and to also see how our students can prepare, you know, through engagement with the community, bringing in experts from the local community, bringing in our family stories, our community stories, our Eastchester stories, to further expand how we know the world. And so this has meant that allowing us to do very critical assessment that allows us from the kindergarten all the way to 12th grade to understand what are the things we're doing really well, and what are the gaps that could actually help us engage with critical thinking to enhance the educational process, where education, as we stated earlier, is a practice of excellence.
And then we talked about some process recommendations. So we're encouraging educators and administrators, of course, to develop flexible pathways to help expand access to rigorous coursework while maintaining incentives for achievement. So, of course, we want to push our students and support them as best we can, and then continue to, you know, gather the important data and constantly evaluate the work that we're doing, and how is it going, and what are the results, and so forth. Designing longitudinal digital portfolios. So this is really important, and this connects to what I teach, of course, which is English Language Arts, because I think developing a true portfolio is something that students can really be proud of and take ownership of, and then carry with them from year to year, and then they can see that, you know, intensive growth. Incorporating age-appropriate current events. So this was a really important topic that we discussed time and time again, because I think it's really important for everyone to understand that the teachers of Eastchester will constantly ensure that anything that is presented in a classroom setting will always be age-appropriate for the children that are reading it, that are discussing it, you know, that are observing it. So we identified that we could build inquiry-based projects, problem-based units in pedagogy, including student input. So again, going back to that reflective piece, and talking to the students about, you know, how they interpreted something, and where it was successful, and where we could make improvements. And then, of course, to notice and understand patterns of participation in various types of courses to evaluate access, and make sure that the courses that are being offered are targeting all of our student needs. And then to seek partnerships with other districts, because as we know, you know, in our own, you know, kind of tunnel, we could think that everything that we're doing is highly effective, but then having conversations and looking outward is where you can really reflect upon what you've already done and say, "All right, I can make it better by doing X, Y, and Z," and so forth.
And I think one of, one of the things that's clear with the recommendations here is actually centering the education process as one that supports all of our students, right? To address our students across all abilities, across all genders, across all sexual orientation, across all ethnic and racial backgrounds, to understand what are the ways in which we can create education as an equitable space for all to learn, where everyone has equal access to success, but also gain a wider understanding of the world, both the biological and the social and the historical, in order to really find their niche and know how to maneuver in our multiracial and multicultural and multilingual world.
And then, just to give everyone a more specific example of what has already been going on in our rigorous curriculum, in conjunction with what I mentioned earlier about multicultural night, which has been going on for years, for as long as I can remember during my time at Eastchester, Mary Leptek, one of our language teachers who was part of the diversity task force, you know, she could attest to that, and that's a fabulous celebration. But we also recently piloted this new novel in sixth grade English Language Arts, and it's called Wish Tree by Catherine Applegate. Mr. Winn is very familiar with it. He came in and he read a few chapters with our classes, which they loved. So this was a core novel that was introduced to us by Eleanor Schuster, our librarian, who's amazing and beyond resourceful, and my counterpart Stephanie Leoni, who is also incredible. She read it first, and then she recommended it to me, and here we are. So, we actually ordered this, and we had it all in place, thanks to Mrs. Susan Chester, back before I joined with the task force. And then as our conversations evolved, I realized that so much of what we were talking about, that we needed to be doing, was happening here with this novel at the core. So... So, you know, with just a very brief synopsis, the story is about a tree. The story is told from the perspective of the tree. It falls under the genre of fantasy, but throughout the plotline, it does identify with some heavier issues that are presented in a very comfortable way, where students can discuss intolerance and identify with individuals that are not celebrated for their diverse backgrounds. And it reveals just ways to come up with conflict resolution and to manage, you know, different difficult topics in just a really eloquent fashion. One of the quotes here below, "It is a great gift indeed to love who you are." You know, that's straight from the novel. And I'll tell you, with reading this with an entire team of students and then across the whole grade, so you're talking about over 250 kids, we had phenomenal feedback. We had a wonderful experience with this. We paired it along with some picture books, changed things by Amanda Gorman, and then what we would do is pull out a quote from that picture book and parallel it to something happening in this novel and ask the students to respond. And it just gave us this really open environment to speak about diversity and equity and inclusion without officially speaking about diversity, equity, and inclusion. So my point is that we have a lot of powerful resources available to us and that the teachers of Eastchester are doing a really great job, I think, so far, you know, even with having these age-appropriate conversations, using the content that is available already. So I highly recommend that everyone reads the book, and it's been a really powerful experience.
Yeah, I want to take a moment again to thank the task force and for the three members of the board who were there for all of these meetings as well. In the type of leadership that was there to think about education as a site of building community, right? How can we create the type of curriculum that brings us all in to the common good of supporting each other and creating a very empowered community and a community built on supporting each other? And so it's been a great honor to serve with all the members of the task force, and I hope this is one of many steps to continue to do the work of building community.
Thank you. Thank you, Cara and Stan, very much. I'd like to invite Susan Chester up to talk about the last attribute.
Okay, all right. So the last attribute deals with the professional learning and support that's needed to make all of the other attributes possible. So we looked at this one as a full group, not with any subgroup, and we have some general recommendations for professional learning and support. And, you know, one of those is how do we, as a district, help teachers to, you know, be able to facilitate difficult conversations and topics when they come up? And I think that Cara gave a fantastic example of you don't have to, you know, bring something up directly to have students really understand it, you know, deeply and meaningfully. So I think that, you know, helping teachers understand the different ways that they can facilitate, you know, discourse with students that is, you know, civil and respectful and encourages critical thinking. And also, we want to make sure that teachers feel supported when they're doing this work. So those first two really, really go together. And then providing guidance to teachers on how to find and evaluate resources that support diversity, equity, and inclusion, and that we're really, you know, making sure that that message remains, that, you know, we're here to teach students how to think and not what to think. But in order to teach students how to think and think critically and be able to, you know, understand many different sources of information, there's, you know, a lot of, you know, hard work that goes into that in the classroom. We need to make sure that our teachers are, you know, have the resources they need to be able to do that successfully. Right? And I think, I think that's it. That is the end of our presentation. So thank you very much for hearing our recommendations.
I'd just like to close by saying, of all the things that I get to do in my role as superintendent, I think, I think I had the most fun, and I found it the most satisfying, my engagement with this group. And I find that, I found that I got to get to know such a marvelous group of people who were so sincerely committed to finding what works for Eastchester and, you know, making sure that this fit us. And I believe that that's what this committee has done, this task force has done. And it's my honor, on behalf of the entire task force, we recommend to this Board of Education these things, which if we begin to undertake them systematically and see how they might interface with the strategic plan, and we can select some of these things to begin, you know, over the course of time. Obviously, this is work that would take a long time, and it's not a one-time event, but it gives us a general roadmap and some things that we can connect to and build into our action planning in the next year and years beyond. So once again, I just want to say thank you to this committee. Let's give the committee one last round of applause. The task force.
This is Dr. Glass, and I thank Susan and the entire committee. I thank everybody for their time and efforts that they put into this project. I was a part of it, several of us were parts of it. There was a lot that everybody agreed on. There was some stuff that not everybody agrees on, but that's fine, too. And now it's up to the board to take this and think about it, digest it, work on it, and see what we could come up with. So just thank you all for your participation and what you came up with. So, very good. All right, so let's move on to the business part of the meeting now. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry. Great idea. Board comments on the presentation. Anybody raise their hands first, second, anybody? Jack?
I just want to sincerely thank everyone as well. I was really proud to be part of this committee, and I know everyone was really dedicated and devoted to really trying to come up with a lot of ideas that would better the community as a whole. So I just want to thank everyone for their hard work.
Christine, would you like to? I think this is, yes. So I just wanted to say just a couple of points. I love the "We are Eastchester." I think that is, I think that is something that the entire district can really gravitate toward and really develop great information, great artwork, great additional slogans that tie to that. We're a great town, so I think that the students will really wrap their heads around this and run with it. I could see T-shirts. I can see medallions to put on the back of a car. So I really, really thought that was really great. I also really liked, I mean, there's a bunch of things I liked in here, but the family, gosh, what was it? The family, like mentoring, you know, family to family, adopting a family. I remember when I first came into the district, gosh, 19 or so years ago, and it's tough to know kind of where to go and who to talk to. And I think someone made the comment about, you know, where do you go to the pool? Or, well, where's the library? Or, you know, if you have questions just around getting to know the schools in and of themselves. It's tough. So I think that's a great, great step to really, as parents, you know, even evolving from one school to another, to even partner up at that level as well, going from Waverly to Greenville, and maybe getting an older parent who has a fifth grader and partners up with a second grader. So I think that that's something that could be contemplated, too. But, so just off the top of my head, those were, those were two items that really, I thought were great ideas. And I can't wait to really digest and stick my teeth into the rest of the content and really, and really figure out how we can leverage a lot of this. Thank you very much, everyone.
Anybody? Okay, just, just before we close this subject, I'd like to say, a lot of what was presented, or some of what was presented, actually already exists in the district. And what we now have to do is we've got to take that, we've got to bring it forward and make it stronger. And just for the people who are here in the room, I came across something actually at our last meeting and out in this hallway here, outside the principal's office. All of you, before you leave here tonight, just walk down the hallway and take a look at this poster. It's framed, and it says, hang on a second, because I want to quote it correctly here. It says, "Eastchester High School Beliefs Statement." Eastchester High School, we believe that, and it's a series of bullet points that represent the beliefs of Eastchester High School. If we could take that and in any work that we do from this committee going forward as a board, developing the values of community, whatever it is, and keep that which already exists in mind and just grow on it and expand it, I think we'll end up in a really good place. So I'm done. If anybody else just wants to add to that or anything, otherwise we'll move on to the next thing. Okay?
If I might just, a couple of items that go onto the just general things that I think you.
Oh, right, 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 yes.
Thank you. So I want to remind everyone that we will, the ballot in the community on February 15th will be a capital project. And if you go to our website, we've put a lot of information on that project. It's important that everyone understand what will be on the ballot and what we're looking to do. This has been discussed at board meetings many times and has been put together really right before your eyes. And now more of the details have been digested, you know, put into digestible form. We'll be going out in the form of mailers, videos, and also certainly now on our website. This is a capital project that will address safety and security. It will build on the work that we began in March of 2020 before COVID made it impossible to go to the ballot, but we had a community committee that worked to put that together. So that will, that work was incorporated in. It will deal with health, wellness, ventilation, accessibility, infrastructure, plumbing, electrical, removal of asbestos and harmful materials, and site improvement. There are two components to it. The first is a base component that's about $67 million roughly, and then an optional, if the first part were to pass, the proposal two would be about, about a $7 million option if the community decided it wanted to add cooling to all the buildings. This addresses all of our buildings and really takes care of infrastructure needs that had been identified as critical. So if you go to our website, you will get the basics and you will get, and if you're interested in taking a tour, the tours have begun. We gave our first tour last night, and we are giving tours most nights of the week of all of our schools. So tomorrow night, we have a tour of Greenville at 7:00 PM and 8:00 PM. If you want to see what the physical condition of Greenville, look at some of the physical things that would be done, some of the things that we would address, you can get a visual, you can get an understanding of that. You just go to our website, you can't miss it. Sign up for one of the tours. We can take 15 people at a time, so 30 people a night can go through. We had a nice crowd last night, two crowds that went through, two groups, and it was, it was wonderful. And I think people found it helpful to see, you know, what we're, what we're planning. So on our website, there's, there are, you know, various nights for tours through each building. And I want to talk a little bit about some of the COVID information. You just got some information from me this evening that lets you know that there were some changes to the guidance last night and that we were able to shorten the quarantine period for students. We think this is, this is going to be extremely helpful. There were advocacy and lobbying efforts, if you will, that went into this, not only from our district and the letter that was written by this board, and I commend this board for really working together to craft something that, you know, I think found the, found the voice for the community and really, really expressed, you know, the right note of the things that we all could agree on would be helpful for our students. And as a result of letters like that and advocacy of others and ourselves, you know, we were able to get some of these changes going and shorten those quarantine periods. Test to stay program began last Thursday. We've had three mornings of that now. Roughly a dozen students every morning have been getting tested, and that's enabled them to go back to school rather than have to be home quarantined. So I want to thank our nurses for taking on that extra duty, getting up at, you know, arriving at the school at 6:15 AM and getting ready for that testing so that by the time school starts, those students have been tested and verified that, you know, that they're COVID negative and they can start the day. The last thing I want to do is just talk about something that we're planning on moving forward on this spring. A couple of months ago, I received a phone call from one of our board members, Chrissy Jagan, who has a connection with the Sandy Hook Promise people. And she put me in touch with someone there, and I got on a conversation and, you know, it's, it's, we know that a lot of children and many teenagers, you know, are dealing with depression, they're dealing with anxiety, mental health challenges, particularly post-COVID. And, you know, there's a national youth mental health crisis going on right now, according to organizations like the American Academy of Pediatrics. And, you know, we're pretty excited about being able to partner this spring with Sandy Hook. We hope to be able to do that this spring. Sandy Hook Promise, which is a national nonprofit organization, it's going to help, they exist to help prevent bullying, to help prevent acts of violence and teen suicide, and it's a no-cost-to-the-district program. It is donor-supported, and it really works to help, you know, provide training and support to staff so they can, you know, make sure that our students are looked after with some of these challenges. And there's also, there's a program, for example, called Start With Hello, which, you know, teaches students empathy and so forth. So we don't know exactly, you know, how this will all take place, but we know these resources are available. We know we have a nonprofit willing to kind of work with us, and we're excited about trying to see where this could take us. And there's an anonymous reporting system associated with this, where if there's a, if there's someone in crisis that is actually staffed, it's a, it's a, not just a call center, but it's a trained crisis center where these calls can go. And, you know, we can, they can help us if someone anonymously reports something. They can provide support, let us know how we can be of assistance. And so, you know, this system, you know, is already in use by about 20,000-plus schools around the nation who've partnered with Sandy Hook Promise, and they've helped more than 2,700 students during mental health crises and saved 280 lives through interventions, prevented more than 60 acts of violence with a weapon, and averted seven planned school shootings. So, you know, these are numbers from, you know, across the country, and this is the power of, you know, an organization that is willing to come and help us by, you know, helping provide an anonymous reporting system, helping us with resources that help build culture along the lines of what you heard tonight. And I want to just, you know, I'm excited, I just wanted to let everybody know that that's something we're working on, we're excited about. I want to thank our, our board members very often, you know, bring good ideas and bounce things off, and that's so helpful, whether a good idea comes from anywhere, board member, community member, staff member, teacher. We, we want to take those ideas and incorporate them where we can, and this one turned out to be something that, you know, I'm particularly excited about, and I want to let you know about it. Well, thank you. Okay.
Could you just clarify when the shortened quarantine goes into effect? Like, I might have missed a communication because I've been in meetings.
Yeah, this stuff happens so fast. We, like, like now.
So students who are currently out?
Yeah, have already been contacted.
They've been contacted and some who are, okay.
Yeah, so anybody who was already affected, who had a longer quarantine that we could shorten, principals got on the phone today and made those calls and said, if you, if you, that five days already, you're good, or, you know, you can shorten it up by a certain amount. So our nurses, our administrators have done that. Certainly, every time this stuff changes, there's some detail that has to catch up with it. All the procedures we have in place have changed, and so we'll continue to message those. The guidelines change, it seems, almost daily. It's a full-time job keeping up with them and then administering how you're going to make it happen. But yeah, that happened last night, and by, thanks to, you know, our professional association, our health department, and our attorneys working us through that, we were able to turn that around today, sent that notice out this afternoon, and made the calls this afternoon.
There's still some restrictions on extracurriculars. Is that true?
Well, that's, that's exactly an example of where you, where, when something like that comes out, some parts of it appear really clear and other parts of it are not so clear. And that was one of the reasons why we all hesitated, because I think there were four elements in part two. There was an A, B, C, D. There was an A, B, C, D, and that element, which I think was element B, didn't, we weren't sure what that meant and we weren't sure what that might do to our athletic programs. And we thought by accepting some parts of this, we'll be saddled with other parts that we thought weren't helpful. We reached out, when I say we, I mean our superintendents association, as we discussed it on an email thread, the president and other officers of that association reached out immediately to the county health and said, hey, if you could clarify a couple of these things, these are important to us, particularly the shortening of the quarantine. They cranked out a memo right away and said, yes, we're going to say yes to the quarantine five day. We're going to study some of these other things and get you more guidance. So that athletic piece, extracurricular piece that you're talking about, I think we still are waiting to hear more and we're just letting it sit, but that's a good example of what always happens with this stuff.
And I brought it up only because I don't want people to hear what you said or read your communication and say, oh, okay, now, you know, five days, it's over and you don't have to hear about it because I do anticipate that that, that part of it and some of the other.
Well, yeah, there, there.
Be worked through.
If you're, yes, thank you. If you're, to build on that, if you've got, just because you might be able to do test to stay, you might be able to be here, there's still restrictions on what you should be doing at home and not participating in everything after school. Yes, that is correct.
I think people just need to be aware.
In addition to that, there were just other provisions too that seemed to indicate maybe the need for additional, a booster immunization to participate if you were exposed in athletics and things like that.
There was a whole, there was a whole list of, yeah, exactly.
Just all kinds of stuff that we're not sure about, but that this five day thing, we feel good about.
Okay, good.
We got confirmation on it.
Listen, if we can get the kids here after five days and get them back to learning, that's the most important thing. So that's good.
And we're sure it'll change again.
Yep.
But for right now, this is the way we're operating.
Exactly.
All right. Okay, is that it? Doc?
That's all. Yes, thank you.
I had skipped board committee report, so let, let me go around. Does anybody have a board committee report they want to? Yes, yes, no?
Yes, I did. So the education and technology committee met this evening and we got some great information that I wanted to share from Scott Winn. So there was this January PD day, as we all know, the January, it was January 3rd. So this is something new in the district, the first time we had a day after winter break for PD. And some of the things that are being worked on in the district, including really, really rigorous and deep reflection on elementary math and literacy programs, so looking on, switching up the math program very soon in the curriculum K5, that's just K5, correct? And the math level and really deeply, I think the look at literacy has, has gone, you know, down a very productive rabbit hole, but it's down a rabbit hole. We're looking at all sorts of things in terms of reading, writing, and word development K8. The technology update that I want to be sure to share is that we have, the teachers are, the district is continuing to look at and to prepare for the rollout of the electronic grade book for grades six through 12, a September launch. It's being piloted in a practice mode, not in public mode, among several faculty and a lot of teachers attended some, some PD around the electronic grade book. So that's something that I think will be of real value to families six, 12, where students and families, parents will have access to understanding what's going on with students' work, what's outstanding, what needs, meaning hasn't been submitted yet, but also what's outstanding in other ways as well. Look at their homework tests, quizzes, progress on labs, all sorts of things like that. They'll have a much better view of that. So that is happening. And we also were, continue to talk about STEM improvements, K12, and ways to build up technology, science, programming, all sorts of kinds of mathematics, engineering offerings, K12, and really to enrich that. And I think that there are some promising things in the future and more we can be doing, but I think it will align really nicely with the strategic planning report that we're going to get at the next meeting. So I wanted to share that information with the community.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Anybody else have a committee report? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Cheryl, would you like to?
Yes.
Before we do that, I should ask for, does anybody in the public have a comment on the items on the consent agenda only? Okay? Going once, twice? Okay, no. Why don't you move the consent agenda?
Be it resolved that the Board of Education approved the consent agenda, which includes the following: number seven, personnel agenda; eight, committee on preschool, special education, special education recommendations; nine, business office recommendations; and 10 other business items, which in this case include the first reading of two new, two policies, 1230 and 1240.
Okay. Chrissy, would you like to second that?
Second.
Sure. Okay. Everybody all in favor?
I had two notes just like.
Comment?
Well, yeah, I just had the two notes, just that you got, it was like a grammatical question. So, I mean, assuming we fix that, I have no other concerns.
Okay.
I received a few similar and I noted that and we'll make those corrections.
Okay, good. All in favor? Everybody's good? Good. All right. We'll talk about future meeting dates later. I guess we could go to comments from the public at this point. So if anybody would like to address the board, please come up. Name affiliation with the school. Thank you. If anybody would like to queue up, you know. And please try to keep it short.
Hello, I'm Sophia McGann. I live at 184 Dante Avenue. So since August, Tomorrow's Leaders has gathered to share personal anecdotes, data, and lived experiences in hope that our Board of Education hears students' perspectives and takes the necessary steps to make our school places a place that we can thrive. Our true mission was devised after learning about the DEI program. We were excited to find out how it would help our peers, teachers, and benefit future students. We do want to acknowledge that the suggestion from the DEI task force was only the on-paper evidence of a change Eastchester has already been making for years. We have been playing music in band class by composers of diverse backgrounds and identities for many years. And we already have established a human rights clubs as well as Italian, Spanish, and French clubs that all place education at the forefront of how we better understand cultures outside of our own. DEI's suggestions are simply additional steps in the overarching goal of celebrating our students' differences together as a community. Yet, for every step towards inclusivity we take to push our eagles onto the path of excellence, there are still gaps in our system that do not allow for equity or accessibility for all students. We hope you recognize that by calling these issues to your attention, we're displaying our school spirit and our longing for more tangible steps towards making students of all backgrounds feel supported. Today, we introduce speakers who are excited for the changes that the recommendations that the DEI has provided. Members of Tomorrow's Leaders are proud to be engaged and hope that our words reflect our desire to be involved in building up our schools. And finally, I would like to thank Dr. Glass, the school board, and especially the DEI task force for keeping our town's values at the forefront of your actions. And I do want to say like a little shout out for Adriana Jones, one of ours. She did have a LowHud article recently and she was very, I just wanted to commend her how confident she was and how well spoken she was to talk about such a difficult topic that was happening within our community. So I think that's something to mention. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Madison Diaz and I'm a senior here at Eastchester High School. I've been attending and speaking at these meetings alongside Tomorrow's Leaders and have been disappointed to see how the board's focus stayed with an advocacy letter to Governor Hochul rather than issues regarding education. While COVID is a huge part of our daily lives, it is upsetting to see it constantly as the main focus rather than other things that require our attention. Our overall student body has gone through concerning and racially motivated experiences, such as those faced by students like Adriana Jones, who courageously shared her story with us. Despite the creation of DEI in June, it is only now, seven months later, that we get to hear the recommendations of the task force. A task force with the slogan, "We Are Eastchester." What does the slogan have to do with diversity, equity, and inclusion? Also, because of COVID, our standard for education, from rigor to curriculum to testing, has been lowered. And in general, our level of access to education for all students has been diminished. I believe that there are far greater things that we as a community and you as a Board of Education should be focused on. I have sat through these board meetings, which have consisted of hours of arguing about an advocacy letter that doesn't and couldn't possibly encompass the views of the entire community. No matter anyone's view on COVID, it is not possible to encompass everyone's opinion in a single letter. I don't believe this board should be drafting anything as the voice of our district because, again, not everyone shares the same opinion. In no ways is this statement meant to be seen as an attack on the board or the hard work they've done. As a member of Tomorrow's Leaders, I sympathize with the struggle to get focused on important matters as COVID remains a major issue. However, I truly believe that the board may have been wasting our time trying to do the jobs of citizens and voters instead of fulfilling their duties as the advocates for the students. Thank you so much for allowing me a chance to speak at these meetings.
Hi, I am Kara Harrison-Dubilay. I am a sophomore at Eastchester High School and the president of the GSA. On November 3rd of last year, the GSA hosted an allyship meeting where students and teachers gathered to learn how they could become better allies to the LGBTQ+ community. We were asked a series of questions, two of those questions being, can you think of three historical figures who are lesbian, gay, or bisexual? And can you think of three historical figures who are transgender or non-binary? Most of the questions were answered with a simple, I don't know, or flat out no. To me, these answers were alarming. How come we are not educated on the history of the LGBTQ+ community? Why don't we read books by queer authors? And why don't we focus on historical LGBTQ+ figures? One of the key elements of the DEI is to implement an inclusive curriculum. I hope this means that the DEI will incorporate more LGBTQ+ topics into our learning curriculum. Students who are part of the LGBTQ+ community should be, should be able to learn about their history, just like we learned about American history. I hope this is one of the steps the DEI takes to make Eastchester High School a more, a more inclusive community.
Hi, well, my name has already been mentioned a bunch of times, but I'm Adriana Jones and I'm a current senior at EHS. For those of you who didn't read the article that has come out yesterday by LowHud, everything is true. Every day, the usage of the N-word seems to increase and it deeply affects the body of students that are African-American or makes other students uncomfortable. It especially affects my other, my two younger cousins, my little sister, and me. Almost every day, my sister comes to me and tells me about how another white student cracked a racist, offensive joke while knowing she's present in the class. As a matter of fact, today, my freshman cousin told me about how two classmates were walking behind her and said the N-word just casually in a sentence. Why is the word being used by the opposite race as if it's meant to be said? And the argument against me is saying that I need to fix my own people first because black music artists use the word in their music. If they are able to say it, then everyone's allowed to say it. But no, that is not how it works. Black artists are using their voices and reinventing a word that has been used in such a foul manner against the black community for so long. Us being able to say the word in music is finally taking over a word that has been used to cause animals in the past. Also, rap music is not school appropriate and is not a job for all black people to set an example for non-black students. Adults and kids my age should know by now what is right and wrong to say. And if they do not know the history behind the word, then it's up to parents and teachers to teach us so we can move forward being educated as a community and a school. So we need to move forward in a positive manner, realizing that Eastchester is changing quickly. And it is changing for the better. We can't keep holding on to many generations of racism that has grown in this town. We need to have an open mindset and not just ignore or deny the stories that meant of many EHS students. For if you are so quick to deny something that is offensive to one student, then you may be part of the problem. That is also something you need to work on as a community, listening. Many students in this building have come forward with a situation that is highly offensive, but for some reason, the other side is being more, is being taken more seriously than the person that is actually hurt. As a community, we need to accept each other for those, for who we are, because Eastchester as we know it is becoming more diverse. I want to thank all the parents, teachers, and students that have been so open and listening and helping the ones who truly need it. You may not realize it, but it really does make a huge difference in our lives and how we go on in our lives. I hope only positive things for this town and school. And I hope we can move forward actually listening to each other instead of bashing each other. Thank you for listening and have a good night.
Hi, my name is Janet Harrison-Dubilay and I had this long thing I was going to read about DEI. And I was going to read it because I was figuring like it might actually be something really to talk about. What I heard tonight, with the exception of what Stan was alluding to, that was not there, he was talking about something that wasn't there. DEI is part of what's addressing is what Adriana is talking about. This does none of that. This does what this school should be doing already. Nothing about curriculum, books, what happens in the students in the hallway, or what makes a black kid feel welcome, what is even remotely part of what I just heard. So let me read what I wrote in the context of, I don't know what that committee did. I appreciate everybody's efforts, but if you wanted to whitewash it more, you couldn't All of our children, regardless of race, ethnicity, or gender, deserve the best education that any public school can offer. All of us, regardless of race, ethnicity, and gender, pay high property taxes to ensure that education. Now there is a political group that seeks to undermine and change Eastchester's long-held dedication to excellence. They choose to engage in false dialogues that seek to divide rather than unite. And clearly, what I saw tonight was their influence on what should have been a real conversation about diversity, equity, and inclusion. To my children and to others that have children of color, DEI should mean that they will have books, materials, and a curriculum that allows them and their classmates to know the contributions their ancestors have made to America's history and culture. It helps to, to bridge a divide of misinformation and the absence of their stories. It is a positive force to create dialogue and a common understanding. It is not a tool to divide or shame. What however is a tool to divide and shame is false information regarding what DEI is, why this group didn't get, actually deal with diversity, equity, and inclusion. It is not critical race theory, which is a college-level legal discussion. Why do they keep claiming that that's what this is? It's, you know, and now we're, you know, hearing it's a communist, Marxist, anti-Christian movement, all ludicrous lies. But to many, the truth has no place in this conversation. It is not about dividing. It is about politics that seek to have school boards become a weapon for those who have no use for or desire to be a part of a real community that cares about all of its children. They would like you to believe that it's better to bury our past rather than have children know our full history. No person, no community, no society is perfect. We grow from recognizing our mistakes and from championing what has worked. Instead, they fear the truth and are afraid to give our children the opportunity to change and grow. They want you to shut down the commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. Have you asked yourself why? Why would anyone object to our children having the tools to continue to make America, America a place that embraces change and progress? Why? This isn't about education, it's about politics. And Eastchester is not alone. School boards across the country are dealing with issues surrounding diversity and just like here, there are some who prefer to pay politics and not care about education. We cannot compete in the future and the global economy when we live from fear and bury our heads in the sand. Yeah, I see it. I'm going to wrap it up. We can't go back to the 50s. And closing, this is a crossroads and our choices here will define this community for years to come. Are we a community that puts politics and falsehoods before our children? Are we a community that puts politics and falsehoods before our children? Is that who we are? I hope not. I want all of our children, regardless of race or gender, to have the freedom to pursue their dreams, to challenge the status quo, to make a better tomorrow. That is what always has made America great. Innovation, a fearless search for the truth. DEI makes sure that everyone has that opportunity, and my children deserve that. Every child deserves that. And while I appreciate the work, I'm not impressed.
Hi, my name's Amukta, and today I'm speaking about a friend's experiences, and her name is Kush Budalani, and obviously, she'd probably prefer to be here in person, but she was recently quarantined. So over the break, her grandparents who live with her got COVID, and soon enough, she and her parents followed. On Sunday, January 2nd, she went to get PCR tested and would expect her results on that Wednesday. That night, she emailed her teachers while her parents reached out to the attendance office. Half of her teachers allowed her to join her classes remotely, and the other half told her to wait until she had approval from attendance. However, by Tuesday morning, she had not heard back from attendance. Instead, her guidance counselor had told her parents to reach out to an administrator. Upon doing so, they explained how everyone in her household had tested positive and her test result was being waited upon, making the fair assumption that these circumstances called for a quarantine and access to school remotely. However, she was still unable to have full remote access until a day later when she got her positive result. This case is not a catastrophic one, but still displays a nightmare of a situation a family with COVID had to go through to ensure that their child would still have access to her education, which should have and could have been resolved within a few hours, ended up resulting in hoops to jump through, confusing guidelines, and a gap in education. Thank you.
My name is Nicole Engelbert, and I live at 117 Bella Vista Street. I wanted to bring the corporate perspective to our conversation on DEI tonight, as I think it might surprise many in the district. As a bit of background, I'm the vice president of product management at Oracle. Oracle is a Fortune 500 company that runs businesses around the globe. Each year, we spend millions on DEI, everything from trading workshops, professional development, recruitment and retention strategies, even collaboration platforms. It is a highly strategic endeavor for us and one we've been working on for years, if not decades. All the major corporations are doing similar things. Why? It isn't in any way a woke plot to bring socialism to the United States. Oracle is for-profit. We have $40 billion in revenue, and our founder, Larry Ellison, is certainly not a communist. He's a capitalist. I mean, he owns a Hawaiian island, for Pete's sake. DEI is a capitalist manifesto. DEI is a proven tool to find and keep the world's best talent. We have thousands of unfilled positions every year. You hear about the chronic talent shortage in tech all the time. DEI expands our talent pool and increases the retention of that talent, full stop, saving us money in recruitment and delivering long-term value from our employees. Which brings me to the second point and is relevant to our DEI discussion today. Diverse teams deliver better technology. Having product managers with a range of experiences and perspectives, race, age, gender, religion, geography, and war, it isn't a problem that DEI solves. It is a secret weapon it helps us to harness. A bit of tension, a bit of dissent, a bit of debate, it's all good in product development as it helps us see what our customers need more accurately, helps us identify new revenue opportunities faster. But without DEI techniques, this tension becomes toxic, derailing our efforts. So DEI becomes a strategy to differentiate our products, gain market share, and deliver more value to our shareholders. All capitalist goals. So if you want your children to work at firms like Oracle, or Microsoft, or Google, and I'm sure many of you in this room do, they must be experienced with DEI if they even want to get in the door. If we truly want Eastchester schools to prepare our children for professional success, we must provide them with a robust set of skills with DEI. Thank you.
My name is Michelle Lawler, and I live at 11 Eaton Place. I'm relieved to have learned of the DEI plans tonight, and I wholeheartedly support them. I'm glad to know that these plans are already building on what we already have in place. It's nice to find things we can all agree on in terms of what should be taught in the classroom, a true, honest, and patriotic history of our country, and that no one should be treated differently based on their race, religion, or sex. Sometimes I like to know where the outrage is when rappers use the N-word in their lyrics. And white kids who sing their songs at pep rallies and actually make up a large population of the people who buy their music have been accused of being racist. In my opinion, no one should use that word out of respect for Americans who had that word used against them in a derogatory way during the time of slavery. It dishonors their memory. But what was said tonight says it's okay for one group of people to use the word and not another. That doesn't teach children equity. My comments from a past board meeting were used in a Low-Hud article this week. Mrs. Jones, whose picture is on the cover page of this story, has a daughter in my daughter's class. They are good friends and have been for a while. She has also been over to my house on a number of occasions. We are obviously polar opposites on this argument, but that's how the agenda works. It divides people. I know she's a wonderful mother because her daughter is a great kid. We need to start finding ways to come together and make this world better for all our kids. Thank you for your time tonight.
My name is Catherine Weiss. I have two children in the district. Dr. Martin Luther King stated, "In the end, we will not remember the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends." This DEI framework is silent in its support of people who are from different cultures, sexual orientations, gender identities, religions, nationalities, socioeconomic statuses, and other identities. These groups are traditionally silenced or omitted from the curriculum and have been silenced and omitted from Eastchester's DEI framework. This DEI framework as-is is a bit disappointing and makes me concerned about what is actually being done in our schools. I had the expectation that the district was already helping students identify their learning styles. What's new here? The focus on personal growth and character development is old news. We do that, or don't we? DEI work is hard work. It's uncomfortable. The task force has acknowledged this fact. I'm asking that you all sit in your discomfort and to understand that we have so much more work to get to a place where our children are receiving the education that will make them citizens of the world. I take some comfort because I see the youth at these meetings. Our youth are ahead of the adults in their acceptance of learning truth and history, embracing diverse perspectives, and expressing their identities. Perhaps you should have included them on this task force as requested by our PTA council. This DEI presentation is so watered down that it appears to be essentially meaningless. Our students deserve better than this. Please do the actual difficult work of making our education culturally affirming and inclusive. Thank you.
Happy New Year, everyone. My name is Julie Fortier, Sylvan Avenue. I know some people who wanted to be here tonight but were unable to for a variety of reasons, like Kush Bu, for example, who is quarantined. As you know, we're in an interesting point in our COVID history, right? We have a critical surge at the moment. I would like to ask the board to consider to reopen Zoom meetings so that, you know, on the topic of equity, I think that's only fair to offer the opportunity for people who would want to participate in this discourse to be able to do so. So I hope you will consider that. I know there's a discussion upcoming about some of the meeting rules, so that would be great to hear that as part of the conversation. Thank you.
I live at 12 Apple Court. I graduated from Eastchester High School last year, and I go to college now. I just wanted to voice my support for the people who are advocating for diversity, equity, and inclusion, and I wanted to voice my opinion that the administration does need to do more. I found that, in my experience, a lot of my friends, a lot of my peers who were in the Eastchester district experienced a lot of hostility and a lot of discomfort regarding things like race and ethnicity and gender. And a lot of the initiative to fight against that has been student-led, with groups like the GSA, with things like multicultural night. And especially with the curriculum, I remember last year, there was a discussion with the AP literature class with an administrator about expanding the curriculum to include more diverse voices. And I feel that it was listened to, but it wasn't taken in adequately, the messages that the students were trying to get through of including more diverse voices and trying to learn and expand our horizons, especially to prepare ourselves for college, for the real world, for interacting with people who are in Eastchester and outside of Eastchester from different backgrounds, from different and diverse experiences. We are not being fully prepared by the curriculum as it is, and I feel that we should be able to, as students, make our voices heard to the administrators in order to expand the curriculum and make sure that we are getting the adequate education that we need to prepare ourselves. Thank you.
That brings us to comments from the board. Okay, would anybody like to, anybody on the board have anything they want to say at this point? Yes, no, decide, decide, no? Yes, Cheryl?
Actually, hang on, I'm bringing something up because I want to share it. So just a couple things. First, I want to start with, I'm sure in this town, everyone's seen the beautiful banners, the hometown hero banners along 22, and I wanted to use this platform to let people know that the Girl Scout Troop is extending that drive. They will be having another hometown heroes banners program, and the deadline to sign up to sponsor a veteran or an active service member who is currently living in the, who is from or currently living in the town of Eastchester. This next round of opportunities closes on February 7th. There's an email that you can email to inquire about it. It is all one word, girlscouttroop01531@gmail. I actually emailed, got a very quick response. It costs $180, and you can identify the veteran or active service member that you would like to sponsor. And as I was listening to the presentation and thinking about ways to promote unity, I thought it might be nice if we, for us as a board, to have a discussion about perhaps sponsoring one of these banners. I mean, all of the veterans and active, many of the veterans and active service members are alumni, but we could do an alumni, we could do a staff member, or a teacher, a coach, someone who's important in the school district. You know, if everyone wanted to pitch in only an eighth of $180, so $22.50, I don't know. Mr. Winn was not my math teacher. I don't know if I did that correctly, but, so I think we should talk about that, and it would be a really nice gesture. And I wanted to let everyone know that you can also participate in this drive, and you've got about another month to get your application to sponsor in. So I wanted to say that, and the presentation tonight on DEI kind of inspired me to think it might be nice for us as a board to do something like that. I also want to give just a shout out to the students who have been coming in a sustained way to our meetings, and we always wanted students at our meetings. You know, I'm not always happy to hear what the students are saying, but I'm so impressed with their ability to engage in civil discourse in an articulate, deep, and personalized way, the way they're supporting one another, and they show up at every meeting. And I think their voices are really important, and I want to tie that to the DEI work because I was happy to see in the presentation that this will both center student self-advocacy, which I think is really, really important, but also center student voices in the next stages. I hope that we can begin to hear more and more from more of our students about their experiences in the school. As a board, it's really important to hear that. I think it's also important that we're thinking about where our common ground is, and common ground doesn't always have to be wishy-washy. I really want to invite everybody's voices and discussions about this DEI work because it has to be community work. But I also think, you know, if we just think about, we all want our students to have access to the most meaningful, profound educational experiences that we can offer them. Of course, we also want all of our students to feel safe, and I am concerned about questions around safety when it comes to what students are experiencing is hostility. So I think that is an important thing for us as a board to undertake, to really think about some of the comments tonight from the students and the community members, all of them, and take it to heart, but also really think, I think we can agree on the idea that school should be a safe place, that when you feel safe and you feel you're not in a hostile environment, then your learning can happen in a more meaningful way. So I really just want to recognize some of the student comments tonight and just also recognize how sustained your commitment to coming to the meetings have been, other community members as well. But I think as a board, for years, we really wanted to hear more from students, and it's been transformative for me personally to listen to some of the students and other community members speak. So thank you for your bravery in speaking out, everyone.
Okay. Thank you, Cheryl. Anybody else? No? Yes, Chrissy?
I just want to say thank you to Dr. Glass and all the administrators and staff. I know these are very challenging times right now, and I know it's taking a lot of effort to keep our schools open with staff shortages and quarantines and tests to stay. I know it's a tremendous amount of work, and just want to say thank you for keeping our kids in school safely and all the work that you're putting into it. Thank you.
Thanks, Chrissy. Anybody else? Okay, just before we close, I'll say our next meeting is January 25th, and I too would like to thank especially the students who came out tonight, and they've been coming out and telling us what's on their minds. It's very important to hear your voices. And all I want to say to you is, go down the hallway, and if you've never read that chart that I referred, you walk down the hallway this way, it's on the other side. Take two minutes and read it because, you know, it really does represent what the high school, their beliefs are. And if we're not making those beliefs show through as a district, then shame on us, and we got to fix that, okay? But if you read that, I don't think you'll find anything in there that probably anyone would disagree with. Take a few minutes on the way out.
Can I make one additional point to that? At the next meeting, I believe we're going to get a presentation from our Strategic Planning Committee.
On what?
From the Strategic Planning Committee. And one of the key points of the Strategic Planning Committee was to talk about, and I'm sorry to pitch it, but I'm going to pitch it because it's one of the reasons that I joined the board, one of my proudest, I'm on that committee, I serve on that committee, with a couple of other folks on the board and a number of others. But that's one of the things that we've been talking about in parallel to the things that have been distractions, like COVID issues, has been the vision of an Eastchester graduate. You know, every Eastchester graduate is our work product. It's what we produce. And your education as students here are what we're most proud of. So we haven't been talking about a lot about it in the public meetings because the committee has been working behind the scenes to get that done. But we will have that presentation next week. So I hope all of you who were eager to hear what the DEI committee had to say will be equally as eager to hear what the Strategic Planning Committee has to say and how we're going to, you know, execute our vision of what an Eastchester student looks like. So that's...
Okay. So until our next meeting, which is January 25th, we do not have an exec session tonight. So would someone like to move to close the meeting? Steve? Yeah. No exec. Chrissy, you're going to second that, right? Excellent job. All in favor? Great. Everybody, thank you all and good night.